I'm going to call the meeting to order and I'm going to read the legal notice into the record. The Town of Clinton, Notice of Public Hearing, November 28th, 2018. The Board of Selectmen, the Town of Clinton will hold a public hearing at the Andros Memorial Town Hall, 54 East Main Street, Clinton, Connecticut on Wednesday, November 28th, 2018, at 6:00 PM pursuant to Connecticut General State Statute, Section 7-163E, to hear and consider comments and feedback on the sale of the real property of the Town of Clinton, known generally as 11 Killingwood Turnpike, aka 27 Killingwood Turnpike. All interested parties may attend and be heard. Dated, Clinton, Connecticut, the 7th of November, 2018, Christine Peel, First Selectment, for publication in the Harbor News, November 15th, 2018, and November 22nd, 2018. Alright, so I'm going to open it up to the public for questions or comments. We have a sign up sheet up here for anybody who would like to sign up. There's already a few people on the list. We have the first speaker, first person for questions is Bruce Farmer.
Good evening.
Or comments.
Okay. I have a microphone, so I hope your folks can hear me. I just want to start off by saying that the development looks quite promising, and I congratulate all of you folks who have worked on this so hard the last few months and brought it to this point.
Great hearing, back there.
I'm just congratulating them for all the work that they've done, bringing it to the forthcoming sale. The first question I have this evening is, is the developer here this evening, Christine?
We have the architect, Matt Williams, right over here.
Okay. And the developer?
I'm not sure if he's in the crowd yet.
He's in the room.
He is, sure.
Okay, so, I guess I'll have to ask this without the developer being present, but perhaps somebody else could just answer these questions. I would like to know if the folks at Greylock have had an initial, an initial meeting with the folks at DEEP, at the state level? Because I would like to know, in layman's terminology, because that's what I would need to know, what is the wastewater planned initially for the overall project as it pertains to the actual wastewater system? And what I refer to as the treatment drain field, where the wastewater sits for a specified period of time before any runoff? I'm asking this, well, I would have asked it to Greylock, because a large-scale system drain field to end, drain field to accommodate all that may be planned on that site, assuming for a moment, restaurants, large grocery store possibly, with an eating and food preparation area, other high-water usage stores such as hair salons, coffee shops, ice cream parlors, et cetera, potential for a hotel, and 24 town halls as it's planned at this point, et cetera, all of which combined require an extensive wastewater plant and system to be approved by DEEP. We know that the property, from prior experience, for challenging years, that the soil is not permeable, there are boulders, there's ledge, there's construction debris from the old Morgan, many extensions that were put on it, et cetera. Or will the folks at Greylock put together a string of smaller systems as built over time the local health department approval? The point is, in the end, a patchwork system or a plan with add-ons without DEEP approval could be more costly over time and with troublesome overloads from a wastewater management standpoint long-term, with possible business closures if you have serious problems. And again, a patchwork system could in fact cause greater costs to keep it up and running and safe for a given time. So that was my first question.
So to answer your questions, currently we're in the town's approval process, and until the town gets through their approval process, the property doesn't transfer to their approval process, so they don't have the opportunity to be on-site to do those investigations. We are able to share as much information through the previous approval process that is available. The developer has also engaged with the previous developer's engineering firm, so they have all the information that is available to them regarding any wastewater capacity on the site. You and I know that the previous developer was not able to move forward on the site because they didn't investigate wastewater capacity first. That probably should have been the first question they asked before they even got into a joint proposal such as that. So I'm sure this developer will be more than aware of that situation and be able to address it. And their proposal, when it gets to their opportunity to go through their approval processes through planning and zoning, will be able to accommodate what is, be able to accommodate, yeah, be able to accommodate what the soil capacity is on-site. Technology keeps developing and changing, so hopefully when they actually are starting to break ground, the technology will allow for the maximum capacity for disposal on the site, so they can get the maximum revenue from the site.
Good. Thank you.
I'll speak loud enough. Usually I speak loud enough. No, it's better this way, because otherwise they have to keep doing this. I'm going to speak first for the, on behalf of the Clinton Economic Development Commission, which is, we met last week. The Clinton Economic Development Commission's mission is to keep Clinton's current business base strong, facilitate new business development, and keep our tax rates attractive to both businesses and residents. The Indian River Project accomplishes all three objectives. The increased tax revenue will be significant, the development will attract Clinton residents as well as regional visitors for shopping, dining, and relaxing. It will also have a multiplier effect on the economy through increased, increased activity for our existing businesses. And significantly, and probably the most significant thing, it will create much-needed positive awareness of Clinton for future investments in our town. Greylock's attention to the town's plan of conservation development, a sound business plan, the wonderful Madison architect, Matt Williams, down here, appealing design, and the Board of Selectmen's rigorous due diligence in negotiating the sales contract has resulted in a truly transformative chapter in our history. The Clinton EDC fully endorses the proposed Indian River Project on the Old Morgan School Site. We urge all commissions, boards, and residents of Clinton to approve its sale and begin this development as quickly as possible. Respectfully submitted, John Allen. Just personally too, this is much more of an emotional part of it is, we waited a long time for this to happen. This is damn good proposal we've got here. When you look at it, you look at the design, you look at the amount of research that went into it, making sure this does complement, one of the big problems we have in town is how do we develop businesses that have a complement, our kind of our, our personality? This does that. It kind of hits all the kind of businesses that we think we could use, love to have a hotel here, it's great. It's also staged in the development so that whoever comes in, much not like the last time, if they come in and they start working on it, they walk away, we get nothing. That's the thing, we can never let that happen again. So, it's solid, it's good, the EDC voted unanimously for this, we'd just like to pass along our recommendation.
Bill and Lori Watrous?
Hi, I just have one quick question. I'm excited about the project going forward, but my concern is, will there be a timeframe to get things done? In other words, once the contract is signed, will they have so much time to start applying for permits? Or is it going to sit there and rock until they decide they want to do something?
Essentially, in the contract, there is a couple phases that take place. The first is the town's portion of the contract, and that is the six-month portion for the town to go through its due diligence, both the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, which we've already gone through, and both of those have been approved, and now we're at the, the public hearing. Then there is a town meeting on December 5th, and, sorry, December 5th, which is the opportunity to people to vote yea and nay on the proposal. Once it transfers from town approval processes, it transfers to developers. We've already allowed ourselves six months, and we're whittling it down to less than two months. That allows us to put it back onto the tax roll much sooner, so we're hoping to push this forward and get the project approved so that we can get on the tax roll that much sooner. The developer has 18 months for their approval processes. That's to work with the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Design Review Commission, DEEP OSTA, which is the Office of Traffic, the Traffic Authority, essentially for any changes to the traffic on-site and on the, on the arterial roads. They're also working very closely with the Regional Planning Agency and FHI, which is a engineering firm, through the Route 81 corridor study. So the timing is actually quite perfect for that relationship, because we have a grant through the state DOT for any infrastructure improvements on 81. So whatever DOT is planning and the developer is planning, they can work out those relationships much sooner than it would normally take place. And DOT is at the table, which is really phenomenal, to move this forward.
Okay, thank you.
The next is Bob Bailey?
I just, I just had a couple of questions. One question is safeguards. From what I'm hearing and what I hear from other people, there's going to be better safeguards in place as far as us being protected instead of the contractor being protected. That's one of the main concerns that I have, is that we don't put something out there and we end up picking up the bill from four years without any revenue coming because the developer changed his mind or whatever the case is. The timeline, you just kind of covered that, that makes a lot of sense. The other concern I have, from what I understand, a hotel does not bring tax revenue to the town. I can't stand here being knowledgeable that that's true, but that's another question that should be considered. If there's no tax revenue, we might be better off with the other option that's out there. And that was the main thing, is, I like your timetable, six months to two, that's pretty aggressive. And that's, I'm pretty comfortable with the way we're going. The other question I had is, I noticed you're putting in piping by the new Morgan coming this way. Does that have anything to do with the upcoming? Because I'd really like to see a sidewalk. I mean, that's just my opinion, but I'm sure there's.
So you are getting a sidewalk?
Yay! This is a sidewalk.
Yeah, and I'm very pleased about that, because I had great concern about any development taking place at the Old Morgan and the connectivity that takes place, students getting jobs there and the connectivity to the library as well. Stepping back to the timelines that you indicated and the protections that the town have in place with the contract, yes, there are some contingencies in place to protect the town. What's been really wonderful in terms of working with the developers, every time we've sat down and negotiating the contract, they're very willing to understand the town's side. It is an unusual contract that we've entered into, because we're a municipality working with a private agency, and we're holding on to some of the relationship and some of the approval processes along the way. So they've been very receptive and understanding about what the town's expectations are, having been through this process before, and making sure that we go through a better process this time. And I'll just stop right now and just introduce the developer, Sam's over there. I'm trying to filter questions through me, but I just want to introduce Ken DeBorrow, he's right over here, from Greylock, so, and Matt, he's with Matt Williams, the architect. Thank you. The other question you have is the tax revenue on a, a hotel. They actually do produce substantial tax revenue, but it's not just the, the tax revenue from the on-site property, their ancillary revenue that comes out from those properties of the, the people coming in and out of it. Originally, when the zoning was created for the interchange zone, the idea was that we would need a hotel to house the families that were using the travel sports facility at the Unilever property. The Unilever property, that sports facility fell through, unfortunately. The developer is going to, I think they really have the best ability to find out what the market will bear and what is the lucrative for them. So the square footage of the building will determine the revenue, the tax revenue. Regardless, you know, restaurant, hotel, it's not going to vary that much. Like I said, at the end of the day, I, I believe that the developer is going to know what's best for the site in terms of marketability, because they have to bring in the revenue for themselves. With this Route 81 corridor study grant that we did get, there was a marketing feasibility portion to it, and they did determine some uses that make a lot of sense on the Route 81 corridor, and a hotel was one of those, those items that make sense to, to be developing. There, there isn't a lot of hotels, higher-end hotels, mid-range hotels between outside New Haven going over to New London, and that's one thing the Planning and Zoning Commission did look at when we were looking at changing the regulations. And the hotels that do exist are fully subscribed. They, they have occupancy, high occupancy rates, so we know that there's a market for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Nankuso?
Good evening, members of board, click to the residents. Dear Board of Selectmen, as you know, the development team with the Simon Conover Company, KGI Properties, and Concord Development submitted a proposal for the redevelopment of the former Morgan School property in July of 2018, and subsequently we made a presentation to the full Board of Selectmen. We recently learned from reading the November 7th, first Selectment page, that the Board had selected Greylock Property Group as the preferred developer, subject to reviews and approvals by other town boards and town meetings. We respectfully request, the town, through its ongoing process, might yet consider our submitted proposal. We would like to once again offer our developer proposal to this board. Our proposal is financially feasible, financeable, and addresses key elements that are critical to a significant grocer, ancillary retailers, and to a successful multifamily project. We have reviewed available technical information regarding the specific site that will likely significant, significantly impact other proposals that might not have similar knowledge to date, ranging from issues of rock removal, contamination, sensitive wetlands, and the nearby aquifer. We anticipate that key decision-makers in town know that the Morgan School property has significant physical and technical challenges. Our proposal, as previously submitted, addresses both the master plan and construction budget effects due to the critical technical information that will certainly impact the larger-scale redevelopment of this property. We offer our comments with the sole focused hope of furthering the town's goals of making the chosen redevelopment plan a reality on terms offered by the successful development part. Our due diligence through your process was significantly enhanced by proprietary technical information regarding site conditions that directly impacted timing, performance, and cost to all material elements to a successful project. While we cannot and do not state any facts as to the level of certainty of any other offered developer proposal being considered in this regard, we understand that certainty of execution is so critical to the town, so that the long nurtured vision for this site might be ultimately realized. Our assumptions and budget are grounded in specific facts supported by professional engineering data. Our proposed master plan closely followed the plan that the Town of Clinton previously reviewed and approved as prepared by Mill Pond Clinton LLC. Significantly, our proposal included a commitment letter from our lender, and an element that contributed to the downfall of the Mill Pond Clinton proposal. Our team recognizes and respects the importance of this redevelopment project to the Town of Clinton. Our team can develop this project in one phase from the time the project receives the approvals. We continue to wish the town the best with this gateway development, and respectfully submit our desire to bring this development to the Town of Clinton. Thanks for your further consideration on behalf of the Simon Conover Company, KGI Properties, and Concord Development. Thank you.
James Kelly Welch?
I'm on a much lighter bill. I would like to speak to the developer briefly.
Thank you, the question's on the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you please ask the developer? I'm the president of the Morgan Alumni Association, and we would love to have some bricks from the Morgan School.
Take them all.
Well, this is lighter.
Take them all.
The other guy said he would, he would save some bricks, and we could, we have kids that went to school there. I went to school there. I'd like a brick from my school. So anyway, if you would ask him.
Thank you. All right, Peggy Anderson?
There's a question from the architect, Matt.
So the questions go through me, Peggy?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's me. If they build a hotel, it's the same question I asked when I had the previous developer, is there ever a possibility of retaining those two gymnasiums? Because with a hotel, they could bring in AAU basketball families and fill that hotel all the time.
Peggy was asking whether or not they could retain the existing sports complex portion of the Old Morgan.
Two gymnasiums.
So, I just.
If they had a hotel, then they could bring in AAU, because there are no places for AAU basketball in this area, and if you had a hotel that had two gymnasiums, you could bring in AAU basketball families.
So, at the end of the day, I'm going to leave it to the developer through their approval processes to make that decision. There's a lot of site configuration that takes place in terms of the engineering wastewater system that has to go in, and then ultimately looking at the structure of the existing building. It's been boarded up for a year now, and before then it had, you know, basically been encapsulated, so we're not sure of the integrity of the building at this point, and it's going to be up to them to determine the final use. No, absolutely. Thank you.
Great question.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions? Can you come up and just sign in, please, or give us your name?
Shaun Zerbit, Truth in Advertising, my kitchen window looks at the back of the Morgan School, so I'd rather it was a park. Not going to happen. In your due diligence, how's the mill rate going to drop when this gets going?
When this actual project, when the transfer of ownership takes place and they actually start to do construction.
When it's done.
When it's done.
When it looks like that.
So, if we start, I don't like to really throw numbers, essentially add it to the same mill rate. So, we could talk about that revenue, we could talk possibly starting around a million dollars in revenue, but I'm not going to throw numbers out there in, in the scope of we have to get through the approval process of planning and zoning. At the end of the day, the commission determines the ultimate configuration of that site, working with the developer. What we've negotiated is preliminary, as you see, and the Planning and Zoning Commission will make the determination, both with Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, as to what can be put on that site, as well as the Office of Traffic Authority. So, there's a lot of things that could.
So taxes never go down?
I, I.
That's what you're saying.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Is there a chance that cost of services to take care of this place is going to eat up anything we've got?
I'm sure there's going to be increase in cost of services, but you can say that at the end of the day, you're going to bring tax revenue in. Currently, the top, that property is off the tax roll. There's no tax revenue. So you're going to get property taxes, just property taxes from the property alone, but then anything that's built on it is going to bring in tax revenue. Then you're also going to bring, attract people to the community as well, restaurants, et cetera, and only build on what Clinton Crossing offers as well. So, absolutely, there's going to be some benefit to the town, absolutely.
Do we have to even really put a number?
I'm not going to, I am not going to put a number, because it's true, there's too many questions to be answered.
It has to be in the decision to stop it, but it's going to help the town.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Undisclosed. Taxes never go down? Don't forget, it's awful open.
Anybody else have questions, comments?
Over here. I'll try the microphone just now. I think Christine has answered a good part of my question that I was going to ask here, but I still want us all to try to think about this. I think it's important that we try to maximize our potential town revenues from this development site and this sale to the folks at Greylock. As described in the Harbor News and our town website, the plan is a bit vague as to what will actually be built over the five-year period or so. And I understand why, because there are several variable factors that come into play, such as the economy, financing, or the ability to borrow money, and at favorable rates, the state of the actual retail business, as we know right now, is challenging. Hopefully it'll get better. The state of businesses for restaurants, especially chain restaurants, is struggling right now. And of course, the key for the developers is the ability to obtain the least commitments that they need in order to go forward. I'm sure that Greylock has done some of their own revenue projections. I'm sure that, oh, Christine is smart by not mentioning real concrete numbers. I'm sure she's put pen and pencil together on this too. But I just want everybody to think about that, because it really is important that we try to maximize our potential revenues for the town. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? You wouldn't mind just disclosing your name and address for us, for the record?
I'm Peggy, I'm pretty successfully. My question is, on the sale of this, of the sale of Old Morgan, what's happening with the furnishings that's inside? Are we going to be taking that and maybe selling it, or is that part of the sale?
So the furnishings are part of the sale. We did have a reclaim company come through and assess what's available to us. The cost of actually getting rid of all the furniture in there is a costing burden. Essentially, bringing trucks in to deal with chairs, desks, et cetera, is not a, a revenue source for us. At the end of the day, it's a labor source. So we've determined that is not something that's sufficient for the town to manage at this point.
Thank you, Kirk Carrion, I know I should be coming south. I'm on the EDC, and I would just say that I abstained on that vote, while he said it was unanimous, it was unanimous among those who voted. Not because I'm against this, it was just I didn't have enough information at that time. Since then, I have gotten a sales contract, and it looks like a very promising contract. A number of changes that I think the people here should know from the previous contract. It is $600,000 less than Mill Pond had agreed to pay. It does have an addition of a Transfer Act, which shifts a lot, a certain amount of the burden for any hazardous waste to developer, which is a good thing from the Town of Clinton's point of view. The financial contingency that this developer has is $25 million instead of $50 million, which was the previous agreement. The good news from that is that the barrier that they have to get to, to get, to get to the point of actually buying the property is half as much. The bad news is that if they only do $25 million instead of $50 million, the taxes on that would be half as much. And in answer to your question, if it's a million dollars, I mean, the math is pretty in taxes, that's about 2%. Doesn't mean the taxes would go down that much, but it would probably mean that it would mitigate taxes at some point. And to the point of what would it cost? How much would it go up? I mean, I've heard some things in the police department that are a little bit concerning about what they think additional policing would cost for this development, which I think are a little bit high. But, you know, I think generally this looks to me like a very promising development. The piece of news that we got here tonight was that Simon Conover has an interest in this property, and I had previously asked about the information about any other developers, what were the, you know, what were the options? And was told that, you know, that they had some non-disclosure agreements, that they wouldn't share it with us. So I think without knowing those options, it's hard to be fully in favor of this. And certainly Simon, which is across the street, has skin in the game that this doesn't sit there for a long period of time. So without knowing what Simon proposed and Conover proposed, you know, I can't say that, you know, one way or the other about these two developers, but to reject Simon and Conover would seem to me like something that is at least raises some questions in my mind. So thank you very much.
Just to clarify, Simon, the Simon group across the street, the outlet, was not the gentleman who just spoke, it's a different corporation. Other questions, comments?
Yeah, hi, I'm Phil Russell. Town President.
Yeah, I was just wondering how the decision's made in terms of the development, in terms of what was decided, whether it's a hotel or not, and what particular store is going, was it a grocery store or some other town? Then how does that work?
So the property sits in what's called the interchange. So the property sits in what's called the interchange development zone, and in that zone, it's considered a mixed-use area. So that means there's a lot of different types of uses that are allowed on the site. So hotels, grocery, apartments, retail, everything under the sun, pretty much, except certain uses that can't be allowed on top of an aquifer zone because our water supply is underneath that. So there's things such as gas stations, dry cleaners, which are not allowed. So the zoning really dictates what's allowed on the site. The developers have put forward some of the recommendations that they would like to see. They will have to go through the Planning and Zoning Commission approval processes. They might get to the point where the Planning and Zoning Commission says, nope, we're not in favor of that, we're in favor of this. Or they might get through the process through the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection that says, no, there's not the capacity on the site for a hotel, but there is already residential component. So there's a lot of questions along the way that have to be answered through the approval processes. In terms of tenants, that's up to the developer. When they go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, they don't need to disclose the actual tenant, just the use. So that's, again, in the developer's hands.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Questions or comments?
Laura Colbank, April in Lane. I just want to take advantage of this opportunity to, okay, I asked, go through you, to suggest a Trader Joe's. I think not only, not only will it bring in revenue, but it will also, I think, attract residents to Clinton. I know, when I go to Trader Joe's, wherever I go down in Fairfield County to visit family, I bring a cooler. I think people would bring a cooler to the mall. Thank you.
Can I get a second? She just made me think of two things. Number one, I have friends over in Lyman, Old Lyman, they knew I was going to a meeting tonight, and they said, "Don't forget Trader Joe's." Just so you all know, that's highly thought of around. My question is, and please stop me if I'm way out there in left field. I noticed for years at the Old Morgan School, they would have that flea market, tag sale, whatever you want to call it, one day. What would be wrong in trying to recoup some revenue by having a one-day come in, take it, and get out? Have a price, something that's reasonable, so we could recoup a little bit of money anyway to offset the cost that we've had in the last few years? Whether it goes to board education, whether it goes to public works, because they were picking up a lot of the extra stuff there, just a thought.
Unfortunately, when I came into office, the building had gone through a long period of time of not being occupied and not being maintained because we were no longer using it. We made the determination for safety reasons to shut off the electricity and board up the building. So there is some mold that accumulates and some, at this point, it's not safe to actually utilize the building, having people come in and out unless there's some staff that...
I got it. Thank you.
Other questions? Comments?
Hi, I'm Sandy Pars. I live right by the new Morgan School. My question is, who's, the townhomes, who are they targeting? What market? Luxury, mid?
So the Graylock developers have indicated that they're looking at luxury market condominiums. Some of the projects they've worked on are high-end apartments, so they do do high-end Other questions? Comments?
Is it apartments or...?
Condominiums.
Condominiums.
Do I? I just want to say thank you. So it's Mary Jo Phelps, 23 Delwood Avenue. I guess I need to sign in, but really, that's all I wanted to say. It's been a long time coming. So anyway, I just want to thank you all for your hard work. I know this has been a process, and people have been, you have been, you know, under a microscope, and people are wanting results, wanting results. And so it's just really exciting to see the town moving forward in this way. So, thank you.
Yeah, I have one other question?
Yes.
Briefly. You had mentioned Route 81 grant for traffic improvements to study. Will that include the potential for Unilever down the road? Is that a big pitfall in local...
So the question is related to the Route 81 corridor study and the Unilever property, whether they will benefit from that corridor study? Yes, the corridor study, it goes from Route 1 all the way up 81, just past the high school, and they will benefit from that. So the idea is that we have the engineering firm and the planners at the table right now, and they're doing improvements. There's been some outreach to the community, some surveys to get an idea of what people think are concerns in the community. They've gone and worked with our emergency personnel to address some of the areas of accidents that have built up over time. And then they're also looking at traffic flow and making sure that we keep traffic flows moving. It's called level of service, and making sure level of service is at appropriate level so that cars also don't back up onto 95. I mean, we're not always going to have that problem during Black Friday. Things are just, you cannot build for those types of instances. You need to look at the everyday and making sure the traffic continues to flow. One of the things that's going to be unusual with this, the way that they're looking at it, they're really looking at changing 81 and making it more of a community. They want to make sure that Clinton retains its identity and sense of place, too. So making sure that traffic continues to flow at a level of service that's comfortable with the community, for the development and increased development, taking into consideration Unilever and Unilever going back on the tax roll as a development in either industrial use as it's zoned for, or the additional uses that could take place with the new zoning that's in place for it.
Thank you.
Just a quick question on that study that you're doing. You said it's going up to the new Morgan. It's not taking into consideration Indian River Recreation?
It does, it does go up to that, just that point.
The reason why I ask is I've seen a couple of close calls with it being dark. They took away the crosswalk there, and I've seen kids crossing over after games in the dark, and I just think that a traffic light is feasible in that area for that purpose.
We brought it to their attention. DOT sort of set the parameters as to the zone that they are going to choose for the study. We've also pressed them to expand it through this, the engineer called FHI, the engineer saying, this is a real issue to us. So we keep bringing it to their attention.
Okay. Just going to say, the only additional question I have in regards to the Route 81 project is, yes, Black Friday is horrible, but every holiday weekend around Clinton Crossing is horrible if you live in that area. So please, make sure that is looked at with both the 81 corridor project and whatever is done at the Old Morgan School.
Yes, they absolutely are looking at it.
I mean, it's horrible. If you live anywhere off of that area, it's horrible every holiday weekend.
Yes, they are looking at it.
I mean, when you have people making left-hand turns from the right-hand lane... Jeez.
Do you want to come up for...
Yeah.
Do you want to sign?
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to say, what I just heard about keeping the other, keeping the Route 81 corridor study, wanting to keep Clinton's character, Clinton's personality. In that vein, I would urge a developer to not have only luxury condominiums. I would urge developers to consider having, having different levels, offering different levels of housing.
All right, if there's no other questions or comments, I'd like to just take an opportunity to invite Ken Navarro off just to speak for a moment.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to just start off by saying thanks to everyone who's been involved with the process. They made us feel very welcome, and we, I live locally in Old Sabre, Connecticut. I have a lot of family and friends in the area. I know, I know the area quite well. The process we've been involved with has been very professional, and, you know, we've done our best to listen. I just want to make a couple of points about us as a development group. We, you know, we pride ourselves in listening and understanding, and I think you'll find if you look at the conceptual planning that we've done here, that we've gotten, you know, we've listened to the local input, we've got local architectural direction, we've got a lot of local flavor, and we're going to try to do something that's characteristically shoreline and that we and Clinton and the whole shoreline area can be proud of. Secondly, we've got quite a bit of experience, and we've done it particularly in sort of shorefront communities. We're building a project right now in Mystic, Connecticut, right on the waterfront. Matter of fact, we actually own no land. The whole building is being built over the water. Don't want to do that again. Watch Hill, Rhode Island, Long Meadow, Mass, Martha's Vineyard, St. Augustine, Florida, Charleston, South Carolina. I'm one of seven boys. Most of us are in the real estate business in a variety of different entities, but we've done quite a bit of development in all those areas. So I think, you know, we understand unique characteristics of shoreline communities, and we're going to try to bring that as best we can to the project. The only other thing I'd say is, you know, we do have the financial strength for a project like this, although someday we'll get financing. We don't really need financing to close on the project and move it forward. So I know that, I know the history of the project, and I know there's a lot of concern along those lines. And while times can change in the foreseeable future, we're not, we're not too worried about that element of the project. So I want to set everybody's mind at ease. And we're, you know, it will take some time to do thoughtful development, but, you know, we don't want to do the biggest, flashiest project, but we want to do a great project that is resilient and will last the test of time and, you know, can, will succeed whether or not every, you know, building block is in place or not. We're still going to have a very successful project. And the way we've designed it, it has some flexibility to be able to evolve in a, in a successful direction and not be dependent on any one tenant or any one element of the project. So, thanks very much. We're looking forward to working with everybody in the town. I can't say enough how professional and supportive the town has been. We're, last point, very excited about sort of the Selectmen's vision of the 81 corridor and being part of a larger pedestrian and village-type development along that area that we can contribute to and be part of. So, thank you very much.
All right, so we're going to close the public hearing and thank everybody for coming out this evening. Just a reminder, on December 5th at 6:00 PM, is the public hearing for that? So, oh, excuse me, town meeting, sorry. Town meeting, 6:00 PM on December 5th. And it's in Town Hall. Please, I'll be in the Rose Room or here. I apologize, I can't remember if we scheduled for three in the morning. So we hope you come. Thank you very much, everyone.